Performing "There Will Never Be Another You" by Harry Warren and Mac Gordon. It is Senior Seth Burke on trumpet, Sophomore Phoebe Christensen on tenor saxophone, Senior Noel Bertram on keyboard. Performing "There Will Never Be Another You" by Harry Warren and Mac Gordon. It is Senior Seth Burke on trumpet, Sophomore Phoebe Christensen on tenor saxophone, Senior Noel Bertram on keyboard. Performing "There Will Never Be Another You" by Harry Warren and Mac Gordon. It is Senior Seth Burke on trumpet, Sophomore Phoebe Christensen on tenor saxophone, Senior Noel Bertram on keyboard. Performing "There Will Never Be Another You" by Harry Warren and Mac Gordon. It is Senior Seth Burke on trumpet, Sophomore Phoebe- Okay, I'll try the names again. Senior Seth Burke on trumpet, Sophomore Phoebe Christensen on tenor saxophone, Senior Noel Bertram on keyboard, Sophomore Adley Dementif on bass, and freshman Chris Cusados on drums.
I want to say thank you. That was fantastic. When you are hearing at the Heron Island Term, just let us know. We'll get tickets. We'll be right there on the front seat. Thanks again so much. That was awesome. You know, it's another way, Mr. Cooten, and thank you for your students, for them to shine. You know, all of our students don't shine for their athletic ability, and it's so wonderful that they get to express themselves and have that creativity with the music program. We really appreciate it, and we wish you guys the very best. Thanks again. Next on our agenda is the ASAA First National Bank Alaska 2022 All-State Music Festival, the National Association for Music Educators, and the 2022 All-National Music Festival, and the 2023 All-Northwest Music Festival Recognition. Students who were selected to represent the school district at the ASAA First National Bank of Alaska 2022 All-State Music Festival and the National Association for Music Education 2023 All-Northwest Music Festival will be recognized. Lucas Cooten, Alaska Music Educator Association, and past president and West Valley High School Band Director will make the presentation.
Okay. I'll put it back where it was. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. All of these students were accepted to their honor ensembles through an audition process at either the state, regional, or national levels. In addition, the National Association for Music Education Festival, the students' instructors, who are a large part of the audition process, must also be current members of NAFTME. These students are among the best in the state and the country, and I will tell you a little more about the festivals as they are announced. Each allows the students opportunities to work with a world-renowned conductor and be in a large ensemble full of dedicated student musicians at the top levels of performance for their age and instrument. They are also able to meet new people and make connections to the Lower Forty-Eight, which is important for students from Alaska continuing on to college. Students, as I call your name, please come forward to receive your certificate and remain standing at the front of the room. Actually, you're gonna do your, you're gonna shake the hands of the board members and then wait over by the band area, and then when we're all done, you're gonna come back and stand in front so we can get a picture of all of you. If the audience will please hold applause until all students are in front. That will help me move things along. The 2002 ASAA First National Bank Alaska All-State Music Festival was held in Anchorage the weekend before Thanksgiving. Over 740 auditions were submitted from schools around Alaska, and 345 students were selected to participate in the ensembles. Out of 97 students in the band, 11 were selected from Fairbanks. And they are Matthew Kim from Lathrop High School, Christopher Park from Lathrop High School, Amanda Scott from Lathrop High School, Cody Webb from Lathrop High School, Eunice Wan from Lathrop High School, Seth Burke from West Valley High School, Phoebe Christensen from West Valley High School. You might have to tell her who you are. Adley Dementif, West Valley High School, Ayla Rogers, West Valley High School, and Hannah Sears, West Valley High School. Out of 89 students in mixed choir, 11 were selected from Fairbanks. Ethan Brun from Lathrop High School, David Cho from Lathrop High School, Kylie Haas from Lathrop High School, Tyler Skinner from Lathrop High School, Taiton Wing from North Pole High School, Elise Jensen from West Valley High School, and Carly Thune from West Valley High School. Out of 66 students in the string orchestra, 15 were selected from Fairbanks. In addition, seven Fairbanks wind, brass, and percussion students were also selected for orchestra when those instruments are needed. Brianna Argo from Lathrop High School, Zania Chestnut from Lathrop High School, Howie Hilling from Lathrop High School, Kalen Kim from Lathrop High School, Christopher Park from Lathrop High School, Cody Webb from Lathrop High School, Eunice Wan from Lathrop High School, Seth Burke from West Valley High School, Phoebe Christensen from West Valley High School, Salak Crowe from West Valley High School, Michael David from West Valley High School, Asa Edwards from West Valley High School, Nathaniel Elsner from West Valley High School, Sophie Henry from West Valley High School, Annette Kugzerk from West Valley High School, Stratton Eybauer from West Valley High School, Ayla Rogers from West Valley High School, Hannah Sears from West Valley High School, Fiona Secor from West Valley High School, Laurel Valentine from West Valley High School, and Priscilla Wang from West Valley High School. Yeah, you've got another certificate. Out of 86 students in treble choir, 13 were selected from Fairbanks. Bethany Mathmas from Lathrop High School, Jenny McGee from Lathrop High School, Katie O'Rear from Lathrop High School, Savannah Russell from Lathrop High School, Juliet Simkins from Lathrop High School, Eva Stewart from Lathrop High School, Isabel Timmons from Lathrop High School, Danielle Beckz from North Pole High School, Savannah Johnson from North Pole High School, Reagan Mitchell from North Pole High School, Zoe Foshee from West Valley High School, Madeline Guffey from West Valley High School, and Adelaide Whitgriff from West Valley High School. Additionally, there were some students who qualified for All-State but were unable to attend. And those students are Owen Woller from West Valley High School for Band, Therese Yu from Lathrop High School for Choirs, Keegan Cole from Lathrop High School for Mixed Choir, Haley Haas from Lathrop High School for Mixed Choir, Wells Wappett from Lathrop High School for Mixed Choir, and Cedar O'Donnell from West Valley High School for Orchestra. Finally, first-chair awards are given to those students that place highest in their sections during the onsite auditions and are the best in the state in their section that year, music's equivalent of an individual state champion. Out of 34 first-chair awards, eight are from Fairbanks. Seven schools in Alaska had one first-chair award each, and eight schools each had two first-chair awards. Lathrop and West Anchorage High School had three first-chairs, and West Valley had five first-chair awards this year. So these students have already come to get their certificates, so if you are over there when I call your name for first-chairs, would you just wave for first-chairs? Matthew Kim, Lathrop High School, first-chair piano in band. Eunice Wan, Lathrop High School, first-chair oboe in band. Seth Burke, West Valley High School, first-chair trumpet in band. Phoebe Christensen, West Valley High School, first-chair flute in band. Adley Dementif, West Valley High School, first-chair upright bass in band. Hannah Sears, West Valley High School, first-chair trombone in band. Tyler Skinner, Lathrop High School, first-chair tenor II in mixed choir. Asa Edwards, West Valley High School, first-chair violin II in orchestra. All right. So would all of the All-State students come stand across in one row across the frontier, facing the audience so that they can give you a round of applause, please? Okay, you all can go sit down. And we have one more smaller batch, the NAFTME 2023 All-Northwest Music Festival participants. Out of nearly 3,000 auditions, over 1,000 students were selected for six honor groups at the 2023 NAFTME All-Northwest Music Festival from the six Northwest states: Alaska, Washington, Oregon, Idaho, Montana, and Wyoming. 13 were selected from Fairbanks to represent the district in Bellevue, Washington, last month. So students, as I call your name, please come up, get the certificate, make the round again, and wait over there so we can bring you back for a picture. Amanda Scott, Lathrop High School, band. Cody Webb, Lathrop High School, band. Eunice Wan, Lathrop High School, band. Phoebe Christensen, West Valley High School, band. Adley Dementif, West Valley High School, electric bass for Jazz Choir. Ethan Brun, Lathrop High School, mixed choir. Tyler Skinner, Lathrop High School, mixed choir. Zoe Foshee, West Valley High School, mixed choir. Sophie Henry, West Valley High School Orchestra. Stratton Eybauer, West Valley High School Orchestra. Hannah Sears, West Valley High School Orchestra. Fiona Secor, West Valley High School Orchestra. And Adelaide Whitgriff, West Valley High School Treble Choir. And would the All-Northwest students please come line up across the front for your recognition? The high numbers of students recognized tonight is a testament to the district's music program and its teachers. Accomplishments of this nature are only possible when there is a strong, consistent, robust program throughout the district. Thank you for this opportunity to recognize these student musicians.
Next. Next on our agenda is the 2023 Interior Alaska Spelling Bee Recognition. The school district, Northern Pioneer Realty and Alpha, Data, Kappa, Gamma Chapter recently co-sponsored the Interior Alaska Spelling Bee. Michelle Damo, Curriculum Coordinator, Teaching and Learning, will present the first-place winners for this year's contest. The event was open to all Interior Alaska schools, public and private. The contest has not been won by any student in our district since 2016. We are proud to present this award to Cindy Sidney Saber, sixth-grade student from Barnett Magnet School.
Can you hear me? That's really tall. I'm really short. Thank you. Like you said, I'm Michelle Damo, one of the curriculum coordinators in the Teaching and Learning Department. I've also coordinated this great event for 12 years, but this bee, that held the end of February, was the 32nd one we've held here in the interior. The Spelling Bee brings in students from all over the interior, our school district, Delta, Inana, Tri-Valley, Fort Yukon, to name a few. There were 65 participants, and the bee went nine rounds. So I'd like to call up Sidney Seavey, a sixth grader from Barnett Magnet School. And like I said, you can, you know it's high. Your arm, your arm is tall as me. As they said, this is the first Fairbanks North Starborough School District student that's won since 2016, and one of very few sixth graders. Usually it's run by seventh and eighth graders, so we are very happy. The words she spelled correctly were unfazed, medusa, noxious, corno, solstice, stridency, astringent, and tapioca. She has said her parents often quizzed her on words leading up to the competition, and we recently got a lovely thank-you card in the mail that says she's still studying really hard to represent the interior. So she, by winning, Sidney earned a trip to Washington, DC to represent the interior for the Script National Spelling Bee at the end of May, online Merriam-Webster's dictionary, and a $100 gift savings bond. So congratulations, Sidney.
Congratulations again. I got the opportunity to be at that meeting, and it was awesome watching all the little ones and their determination to participate in this whole thing. It was really awesome to watch them. They were fearless, so it was really great. I don't normally get that opportunity, but I was glad to take advantage of it this year. Next on our agenda is the ASAA First National Bank Alaska 2023 World Language Decimation. State Champions will be recognized. Eileen Julian Ben Ielson Jr., senior high school teacher and World Language Decimation coach, will make the presentation.
Good evening. Ielson had a lot of first-place winners again this year, but I do want to mention, since we only bring our first-place winners, that we also had a lot of second- and third-place winners. And in Spanish I, we took 10 of the possible 12 awards for the entire state. And in Spanish II, we also took 10 of the possible 12 awards for the state. So although we're only seeing our first-place winners tonight, we had a lot of students who studied extremely hard before school. At lunch, they'd come in and practice. After school, they worked their high knees off. And they understand the importance of foreign language to their future and their careers and moving forward in a world where you need to know more than one language. So they really dedicated themselves. So, starting with our Spanish II, first-place winner for studying cultural trivia information, almost 1,000 pieces of information from history, geography, food, music, art, you name it, she can tell you who did it. Amelia Chipman, come on down. For pulling a topic out of a hat and speaking on it for three minutes without grammar errors, doing a wide range of vocabulary, different verb tenses, and talking for three minutes on that topic and not going off-topic. Karil Castro, first place. And while she's here, no, wait, wait, wait. Because you know you've got another one. She also memorized some poems and spoke them beautifully with deep emotion and got first place for poetry. For pulling a topic out of a hat and speaking with a partner, marked down for any grammar errors, which means they didn't have any to get first place, for a wide range of vocabulary and a wide range of verb tenses. Partners Amelia Chipman, come on back, and her partner Scott Grover. For Spanish I, studying almost 1,000 pieces of information on history, geography, food, you name it. First-place state winner for Spanish I, Zach Dewey, come on down. For pulling a topic out of a hat and speaking impromptu with a partner on that topic with no grammar errors, range of vocabulary, and all of that. Spanish I, Sanaya Tavaki Dural, and her partner Bailey Lutrell. And if our first-place winners would come to the front for a photo for parents and point out that we won more first place than any other high school in the state.
Congratulations again, students. Next on our agenda is the Alaska 2023 Academic Decathlon State Champion Recognition. District students will be recognized for their first-place awards in the recent 2023 Academic Decathlon State Championship Division I. Overall state champions. Lathrop extended their state championship went straight to five consecutive state wins with their 15th state title since 2000. The team tied for overall Super Quiz State- The team tied for overall super quiz state champion. Lathrop High School is coached by Christopher Vinshoff, Lathrop's engineering teacher and academic decathlon advisors.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Chris Benchef. I teach statistics, engineering, and computer science at Lathrop High School. I also coach the academic decathlon team, which I've been a part of and coach now for 24 years. Fairbanks has had a long history of success at both the state and national academic decathlons. Fairbanks teams have won nearly 75% of all 38 state decathlons ever. Both Monroe and Hutchinson have won their respective divisions at the state competition many times over, and West Valley even finished second in the national division two back in 2007. This year's state win for the Lathrop team, as our president has said here, is their fifth consecutive state title and 15th in the past 24 years, extending Lathrop's record as the winningest team in Alaska academic history. This year's academic decathlon curriculum focused on the history and culture surrounding the American Revolution and also included the study of economics, chemistry, and trigonometry. In addition, students were expected to write essays, deliver interviews, and give both prepared and impromptu speeches. The team has been working, been hard at work for months now, studying six days a week to represent themselves and their school as best as possible. And this hard work led to a great deal of success at the state competition earlier this month. I'm happy to recognize the efforts of our 12 state competitors here tonight. At an academic decathlon competition, gold, silver, and bronze medals are given to three different divisions, honor scholastic, and varsity in all 10 subject areas, so there are 90 awards possible. At the state competition, Lathrop earned 40 of those 90 awards, as well as $11,000 in scholarship money. Tonight, we'll recognize the students and their individual gold medal state championships. We will read names and do it the same way as our friends did for music earlier. First up, Marie Anderson, a freshman and our team's highest scorer. Can you come on up, Marie? Joaquin Coroso. Joaquin was the highest-scoring alternate student in the state. Jimmy Evans, I don't think made it tonight. In addition to being his, oh, I don't have my list. In addition to being on our state champion team, Jimmy earned a total of three individual first-place awards in math, econ, and science. It was the second-place overall varsity behind his teammates. LaHanza Fernando. Jeffrey Goddard. In addition to being part of our team, Jeffrey was the second-highest overall scholastic scorer. His brother Nathan Goddard. Nathan had a first-place overall finish in both science and in literature. I missed earlier, Joaquin had a first-place finish in art, state champion in art. Timothy Greenwood. Timothy has a first-place gold medal in mathematics. John Haas, I don't think is here. John had first-place finishes as an alternate in math and economics and science and social science and speech. Jean V. Kumari. Now they had first-place gold medal finishes in both economics and science. Nurchen Nersultan. Chad Pisick, I don't think is here tonight. And finally, Henry Semino. Henry Semino earned first-place overall gold medals in economics and literature and art and music and social science and was the highest-scoring varsity student at the competition. Of our group here, our nine official students will head to Frisco, Texas next month to represent Alaska at the Division Two National Finals. And these past three years, our team has grown pretty large despite the challenges of COVID and remote learning. In 2019, when we started our current streak of state wins, we had a total of nine students participating, which is the minimum for a team. This year, our team had 22 students involved. This growth has also helped us build our success at the national level, where we've been third place in Division Two in both of the last two years. We have to build on that success that we had to Nationals in April, and this is a team, across the room here, with the experience to do it. Other people here, pretty much all of them competed at the national finals remotely last year and many of them the year before even. Of particular note, two years ago, Jeffrey Goddard became the first freshman in Alaska history to win an individual national title in interview. Last year, John Haas won a national title in mathematics, and Henry Semino was a national champion last year in both economics and social science. There's even a new program this, last year in Alaska for the academic pentathlon, which has existed nationally for a long time. Alaska just started doing it last year. And Nathan Goddard there decided last year he wanted to participate as an eighth grader. He asked me to coach a team for Watershed Charter School, pulled together a team that included Marie Anderson and some of those other friends there. And together, they worked hard to do kind of the same thing, but in Alaska, they won the state competition, the first one ever held. And then at the national competition, Nathan was a national champion in both science and fine arts, as he was the second-highest varsity scorer in the country. And Marie was a national champion in art and the third-highest honor scorer in the country. Together, their team scored so highly that they were third overall, they don't do divisions in pentathlon, third overall, missed winning the whole thing by two questions out of 1,300. So that was impressive. So it's a great group. They're experienced and ready to go, ready for a fun Nationals. I wish them all the best of luck. Congratulations.
Mr. Vinshoff, we thank you and your team again. We thank you for your dedication to being able to work with our young people across the district. Congratulations again. Next on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. We do this by consensus. Are there any objections to approving the agenda?
Move to adopt the agenda with consent items.
Second.
The agenda is approved. Up next is our public comments. Public comments on reports or non-agenda items are limited to two minutes per person for a maximum of one hour. People who have signed up in advance through the school board office to testify in person or by Zoom will be called upon first. And if time remains, anyone else who's in person will be invited to testify until the one-hour time limit has been reached. A person testifying shall state their full name, spelling their last name, and the city of their residence. Board members may ask questions for clarification. Although there is time at the end of each meeting for school board and chief administrator comments, some concerns may not be able to be addressed immediately as additional information may be needed to be gathered. Only a board member may remove an item from the consent agenda. If the item is removed from the consent agenda, it shall be considered separately as the last item of new business. Asterisk items will then be adopted by one single motion. Any person wishing to speak? Who have the vote, Miss Richardson? Oh, is there anyone? So, well, those who have signed up, the first on our list tonight is Ellen Weiser. If you will come forward and spell, state your name and spell your last name, please. You have two minutes to testify. Are you Zoom, is she on Zoom, Ms. Richardson? Ms. Weis, are you there?
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Oh, now you can hear me. I'm so sorry. I was, I'm muted. I'm going to testify in favor of the school board asking the Fairbanks North Star Borough for additional funding for the schools. I've been a teacher for 35 years in Philadelphia, and one thing that I know for certain is that class size is essential to good teaching. And our students deserve taxpayer money to be spent on their education. And no better way to spend money is than on teachers. There's this saying that Frederick Douglass had. He says, "It's easier to build strong children than to repair broken men." And that goes a long way in my thinking about education. If we can start our children on the right feet, we will spend less and less and less on repair and remediation. Also, I've always taught my own personal children. It's better to ask and be refused than never to ask. And so there is no harm at all in asking for more money, and there might be a great deal to gain from it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there any questions? Thank you so very much. Up next, we have David Delong, if you'll come forward. Are you on Zoom? Okay.
Hello.
Hello there.
My name is David Delong from Fairbanks, D-E-L-O-N-G. And I am here to support music education in our schools. Hey, what about that jazz band? I think that may say it all. Music education enhances intellectual development, and it is known to actually have a measurable effect on brain development. Music education leads to better outcomes for students and our community, and it is very important to making a community that people want to live in and maybe even move something that anyone trying to recruit for important and difficult-to-fill positions understands. And I think there may even be more money in scholarships for music students than any other field, including athletics. So please do not eliminate music education. That would be a grave mistake and hurt our kids and our community irreparably. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. The next is Nina Haru. Are they on Zoom or if you are here in the audience?
Hello, can you hear me?
Thank you. Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Hi, I'm a parent of two boys that went through the school system in Fairbanks, and they were greatly benefited by music education. Both of them went on to college, one just finished college, and they wouldn't have gotten into the programs that they got into in the first place without the beginnings of music education and continued music education throughout their secondary schools also. Music education is basic education. It, you know, everyone knows how it contributes to brain development. It makes students better math students. It makes students better readers. They learn how to read music also. So the music programs in the borough have been slowly gut, being gutted. And we have to keep these programs up for the sake of our children and for the sake of our community as a whole. You could, you know, you could always build a house without windows, but would it really still be a house? And that's what we're actually doing right now by gutting music education. Parents want this more than anything else. People coming into our community want this. The quality of our schools will really determine what, you know, how businesses will strive in our, in our community. So by gutting music education and not supporting it, we're really sabotaging our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any other members of our public wishing to come forward and testify? I think. Go ahead and come forward. If you'll tell us your first name, spell your last name, and place of residence.
Earl Cologie, last name is C-O-L-O-G-I-E, and I'm from North Pole. Hello, everyone. I'm addressing you tonight about reassignment of teachers in the Extended Learning Program, ELP, our district's gifted program. The district notified ELP teachers the Friday before spring break of our new reassignments. I underestimated the school district. I thought I would be reassigned to four schools next year. I instead have been reassigned to five schools, including Salchow. Yes, you heard that correctly, five schools. I spoke with our Director of Special Ed yesterday, asking about how this five-school arrangement could even work. And according to her, going to five schools each week is doable. Obviously, this administration does not have a clear understanding of what our job entails and the time that it takes. A large portion of that time includes testing in order to keep students enrolled in the program. I proposed a potential schedule to her, but she said the service plan has not yet even been worked out, so you can't make those plans. Our leadership in SPED canceled a meeting with us and has not even shown up at our PLC meetings to hear our concerns and answer any questions we have. It sure feels personal to many of us. How can ELP teachers make a decision about returning to ELP next year when we can't get clear answers from our leadership? Speaking of leadership, I addressed the school board on March 7th, and not any one of you has followed up with me about the violations to our ELP state service contract. I also emailed each of you back in February and have not heard from any one of you. It's no surprise that many people are not testifying here, because in my opinion, it seems like it doesn't make a difference. In conclusion, ELP teachers have not been treated well, and frankly, we have no idea how we can provide a decent program at each of our multiple schools with these untenable reassignments from HR. In addition, we are being told we will most likely be used as subs yet again to cover reg ed classrooms in the fall. Frankly, it will not be surprising to me if you lose all your current ELP teachers for next year. You already have a teacher shortage. Can you really afford to lose more teachers? Thank you.
Just a second. So could you please check your email? Because I did answer an email on the PLC and that program.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Would you please, again, check your email? I did respond, and so sent out an answer, plus I attached four documents to my, my response to you.
I never received them, but I will check again.
I appreciate it. Then if you don't see it, please let me know.
I sure will.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And first on, on the list, I had Ms. Michelle Thomas, if you will come forward, and then I will call Owen. Yes, but I looked down on my list and Ms. Thomas was next, and I didn't see that, but you'll be next right after her. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Thomas, T-H-O-M-A-S. And I'm advocating that we ask the borough for $5 million because with more money, we have a greater ability to provide lower class size, which definitely alleviates the stress and pressure on teachers. A higher quality, broader, and deeper educational opportunities for our students will also exist if we ask for $5 million. The $5 million will bring back ESADAs, library assistant positions, high school secretaries, and and kindergarten aides. Lastly, the higher amount of money we ask for leads to higher rates of high school graduation, more years of completed education, and lower incidence of adult poverty. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Guthrie, will you please come forward?
Good evening. Owen Guthrie, G-U-T-H-R-I-E, Fairbanks, Alaska. Thank you so much. It's wonderful to be here this evening in a room with so many people who care so much about education. It's like a temple. It's my pleasure to be here. Thank you for your service. Class of '86, West Valley. My wife's class of '87, three daughters went to West Valley. I'm here tonight to sing the praises of North Star College and to thank you for supporting this wonderful program. As most of you know, I think perhaps all of you know, Alaska has the inglorious distinction. Okay, Alaska has the inglorious distinction of being ranked last amongst our 50 states for the rate of students who attend college after high school. Last. I'm sure you know that. The research is out there. The way we address this is through programs such as North Star College. It is a powerful program that helps Alaska get our students to attain post-secondary schooling as well as credentials. More importantly, in my role with the University of Alaska Fairbanks, I'm Vice Chancellor of Students there, are the personal stories of the families and their students who but for this program would not have attended post-secondary education and received their degrees. It's a powerful program. I'm sure some of you have seen, posted some of the personal stories. They're wonderful stories. It is, as a Fairbanksian, my grandkids are going to be here. My three daughters are here. It's important to our community, and I so appreciate your support for this very powerful program. I like to imagine what our community is like 10 years from now after this program is run at scale. For those years, the numbers of students for whom lives has made a huge difference. It's going to be a game changer for our community. So thank you for your support, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Laura Corner.
Hi, everyone. Yes, it's Laura Connor, C-O-N-N-E-R. I'm also from Fairbanks, and I'm also here to speak about North Star College. And I wanted to thank all of you for your support of North Star College and encourage you to continue supporting it. I'm speaking both in my capacity as my role at UAF as Faculty Fellow for Dual Enrollment, but also as a parent. I have a high schooler who's just about, she's going to be going into 11th grade, and I've got a daughter who also graduated recently. She's a freshman now at UAF. And I've seen their friends are a lot of the North Star College students that either have attended recently or are about to attend. Since these kids have spent the night at my house, I know a lot of them personally. And some of them I've just seen, you know, volunteering in the classroom and so forth. But I wanted to just add a couple of things to what Owen said about the impact of the program, kind of from a personal note. I mean, one of the really huge strengths that I see of North Star College is that it creates an equitable path to college for students from all kinds of backgrounds, and in particular, students for whom college might be out of reach financially. I was one of those students myself. So I was the first in my family to go to college. My family didn't have the resources to send me to college, and because of that, I didn't see college as a possibility for myself for a really long time. I delayed going to college for quite a while, and I had to work full-time and take out a lot of loans. As everybody knows, that can impact you later. The impact of something like North Star College would have made a tremendous difference for myself, for my family. And I know that that's the case for a lot of students that are attending North Star College now. It gives them the sense that they can go when they maybe don't see that as a possibility. And for students of all backgrounds, the program's structure supports self- and career exploration in ways that I think is pretty unique. So I just think that the program sets people on a great path for the future and opens up hope and possibilities. So thank you for your support.
Thank you for your testimony. In case you come forward, just state your name, spell your last name, and your place of residence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Justin Seavy, S-E-A-V-E-Y. I live here in Fairbanks. And thank you for listening to me. I don't have any prepared remarks, but I wanted to speak to the impact that the ELP program has had on my children. We have been in the district for only a couple of years now, and the ELP program is one of the things that drew us to this district after a very difficult navigating at a different district who did everything they could, and they were great people. My children were struggling both academically and, in some cases, emotionally. A lot of the children that are part of the ELP program have not only special academic needs, but they also have emotional needs. They have, they might learn differently. In some, our position, or our feeling is that gifted education is special education. A lot of the needs of these students are congruent with special education. Both of my children, who have very different personalities, are thriving in this program and in this district. And it has been such a relief to finally feel like we have them in the right spot. And so I understand and respect the very difficult balancing act that you all have to navigate, and I appreciate all the hard work that you're doing. And I just wanted to speak to the importance of this program, and I hope that you will consider that. I understand that there are decisions to be made, but please, please make room to keep this program, because it has made a difference for our family, and I know it makes a difference for many other students as well.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any else in the audience that would like to come forward and testify? Mr. Nesko, would you please come forward and state your name, spell your last name, and place of residence?
Thank you. Hi, my name is Erin Janoso, J-A-N-O-S-O, and I am from here in Fairbanks. And I just wanted to begin my testimony by saying such a huge thank you to Mr. Cluton and each and every one of the student musicians that were here tonight. The years of work and dedication they've given to our music shows and it shines. They have so much to be proud of. It makes me proud of them, of their teachers, and of the skill that these students will be taking with them out into the world as they live into their futures. The other thing I feel and cannot ignore, though, when I listen to performances like tonight's is an acute sense of loss for all that Fairbanks Music Ed programs and students have already had taken from them. For example, I'm certain that most, if not all, of the student musicians you heard tonight began playing their instruments during their elementary years, which is an opportunity already gone from our schools and our students as of last year. There are no shortcuts to the skill you heard and witnessed tonight, and there is no substitute for their teachers. Cuts to music programs are not a part of this year's budget discussions, thank goodness, but it's already been indicated that without increased state funding, there's a good chance they'll be back on the chopping block next year. In a February 6 school board work session, Ms. Maline and Mr. DeGraw indicated that if large deficits persist without state funding, cuts to elementary, general, music, PE, and library for next year's proposed budget could become a possibility if the school board so desires. They described how these cuts would allow for savings via the condensing or shortening of the school day with perhaps a fee-based after-school program to fill the childcare gap that would then necessarily result. If further cuts to beloved and essential programs sound as abhorrent and unacceptable to you as they do to me, I am begging you to join me in inundating our state representatives with requests to support HB 65, increase the BSA, the Base Student Allocation. This increase takes, this increase could take these cuts off the table, and this sort of advocacy is what we must do to keep music in our schools. The Fairbanks Music Advocacy Committee has a Facebook page as well as a website. I'll be posting info on this advocacy in both places, if you look it up. Thanks.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Could you leave those sites' addresses with Ms. Richardson so that we'll have access to those? We have a question for Ms. Arnie.
Just, could you email us the rest of your testimony? Because I know you typed it out.
Yeah, yeah, it's always an effort to get it all in, but yes. And I'll do that with the, I could do that with, I could, would you like me to send an email perhaps to the board and with those sites and stuff so that?
That'd be great.
Track of that, okay. I'll do that after the meeting tonight.
Thank you so very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come forward? Okay. Seeing none, public testimony is now closed. Next on our, we don't have anybody from the borough, I don't believe. So then next would be my president report, and I won't take much time because we spent, most of it has to do with the advocacy of our trip to Juneau, talking with legislators and sharing our video, our budget presentation by Mr. DeGraw, and some special ed stats that we were able to share. So, and my participation in the spelling bee. So I won't take up any more time. I'll go to Ms. Maline and her report.
Thank you, President Sanderson. I want to start my report with, it's a little bit of a transportation/communication thing. We've become aware of a problem with our provider for the late bus notifications to families. We're working to figure out the best way to remedy that problem, but in the meantime, we are asking families to just make sure that your email information is correct because that's how you'll be getting your late bus notifications until we can work with the provider to get this problem fixed. So that communication has already gone out to families. I just wanted to make sure that we put an exclamation point on that to check your information so you have correct information or we can get your late bus notices if that happens for your bus. Next is Science Fair time. And so Thursday, we'll begin the judging of the Science Fair, and I'll be privileged to be a part of that again this year, so I look forward to that. So the judging of the exhibits will begin March 23. Public viewing of all of the entries and exhibits will be Friday, March 24, between 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., and that will be at Pioneer Park, at the building there. And then the awards ceremony, honoring those first-place winners will be Saturday, March 5 at 1:00. So if you want to see a little more of the talent and expertise of our students across the borough, you can do that on Friday. Another thing that's happening right now is our materials review process for the kindergarten-through-fifth-grade ELA materials. And I had mentioned earlier in a report that our Teaching and Learning Department has been hard at work delivering those materials to all of the elementary schools so the teachers can have a chance to look at those materials, review them, and give input. So that process has happened, and thank you Teaching and Learning for doing a heavy lift on that. Those materials are now at rest upstairs on the fourth floor in the curriculum library. And the library is open, and the public can come and review those materials until Friday. They've been up there for the week, and actually, the library was open a little later this afternoon for folks to come and look at the materials and give feedback and get an opportunity to look at the choices that are out there. So next, I just want to talk about what's coming up in, for our students and staff, and that's statewide testing. It's, March 27, we'll launch the opening of the window for our statewide summative assessment, AKA STAR. There is more detailed information about when certain grades are testing and what weeks of the window they're testing. And that information is available on our website, but the individual schools will be sending out that information as well. So for parents who have kids in third grade through ninth grade, kind of watch for that so you'll know when your students are testing. And then I also want to just remind folks, we've already heard some comments about this, and we've been working at this for some time, for the last several weeks, but there is still opportunity to give input to our legislators about public school funding. Our video is available for sharing and sending to legislators and lawmakers to advocate for public education funding. At the end of the video, there's ways that you can email and contact local legislators and statewide legislators. So I know here in this building, in this office, we're continuing to do that, and we just invite the community to join us and continue that effort. And finally, I would like to make everyone aware of an opportunity. There was some interest some time ago about learning more about the procurement process and how that fits in to the overall workings of the system. So in response to this and in observance of National Procurement Month, if you didn't know that, that's, this is National Procurement Month, the Purchasing Department is issuing an RFP, not a request for proposal, but a request for posters. So this is an opportunity for students and individuals to become aware and educated on how the procurement process works in kind of a fun and artful way. So it's also a part of their ongoing community outreach to make folks aware of how the procurement process works. And if you're interested in participating in that project at any level, or you're just curious about how it works, you can go to the Purchasing and Warehouse website, and there's information on there if you have a student that wants to sign up as a part of this request for posters. You can do that, and it looks like kind of a fun little project. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Doran.
Thanks, thank you, Ms. Maline, for your update and for the reminder about the state assessments coming up very quickly here. Do we have a plan to do an assessment report from last year's results and the MAPS testing as we've been progressing through this year?
We can certainly have that available this spring once we kind of get through the testing window.
So through Mrs. Sanderson, I'd just like to put out a request.
So we have no unfinished business and no new business. But we are going to do our budget work. The board will continue its work on developing and recommended budget. The FYI 2023-2024 recommended budget will be before the board for approval at its Wednesday, March 22, 2023 special meeting. The recommended budget is due to the borough by March 31.
Thank you, President Sanderson. At this time, Mr. DeGraw has a brief report, and then we can answer any questions or take any comments.
Mr. DeGraw, before you get started, Mr. Guthrie, when you testified, would it be possible for you to email a summary of the impact of the North Star College to the board? We could have access to it and the impact it's had on students. I would appreciate having that, and if you'd like to include yours, too. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. DeGraw.
Hello, there we go. Thank you, President Sanderson. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. We did some good work last evening to come up with a couple of different scenarios that hopefully I'm going to illustrate here for the board. Let's see. Here we go. This was the interactive spreadsheet. This was the interactive spreadsheet that we worked on last evening, ran through several different scenarios, items. We have, we have items on the left side of this list that are, that are on our priority add-back list that we've put forward. We also have items, most, most if not all the items on the left side of the screen are staff-related positions. Items in the right column are more non-staff items, and then items that are highlighted yellow are investments in the proposed budget, and then items highlighted red are items that were added at request by various board members. So, the, the spreadsheet that you have shown on the screen currently is, uh, what we're calling Scenario A. I'll just run through the specific details of this scenario, so everybody can kind of grasp where we're at here. To start with, where this is an increased local contribution ask from the borough of an additional $3 million. It's important to note, that's beyond the 3.5 million that is currently in the proposed budget. Other revenue adjustments in this scenario are a, an approximate fund balance utilization of $200,000. My recommendation will be that those dollars come from non-general fund, fund balance. And then we have identified an additional three intensive students. Data's completed their annual audit of intensive students. We have an additional three that we have approved, and that'll be an additional $230,000 in revenue that we can, that we can count. Other items here, I'll go through one by one. We first would be restoring the PTR at elementary grades, and the, the related costs are there as well that the, the public and board members can, can reference. We're also adding back kindergarten aides, high school secretaries, secondary library assistants. We're adding back the smart teacher, the smart counselor. Those are the bulk of the staff-related add-backs. Then in the, in the right column, we're adding back the five non-student support staff days. We're adding back C E C custodial services. And then we are making $285,000 of additional department reductions. We're cutting the staff laptop annual lease payment, and then we are reducing our district lobbyist contract. And that concludes the list of cuts and add-backs. So, this illustration, as you can see at the top, will show either a surplus or a deficit position with this interactive sheet. This shows, uh, a modest surplus of $22,000. I basically consider that as, as a, as a break even. That's balanced, for all intents and purposes. We'll go over, I, I'll pause there. If there's any questions or comments, we have, I have the Scenario B that I can also illustrate for the board and public.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. DeGraw. Continue. We also have Ms. Maradi on Zoom, is that correct? Okay, thanks.
It's not showing. I'm going to stop, share, and reshare. There we go. Okay, the, the adjustments, all the adjustments, everyone hopefully noticed, were highlighted in yellow, adds and cuts. Here, the changes from Scenario A to Scenario B are highlighted in blue. So, we've made an adjustment to the local contribution ask. We've increased that from a $3 million additional ask to a $5.4 million additional ask in this scenario. And then, on the left-hand column, we have added back PTR at the secondary grade levels, and then we have added back E L P teachers. And that is balanced out to the dollar. So that's the difference between the two scenarios, and I will stand for any questions.
Ms. Burnett.
Uh, just for clarification purposes, more for the public, Mr. DeGraw, um, that additional $5 million is in addition to the 3.5 we already had slotted, which means that will, and then turn to around $9 million.
Correct, just shy of $9 million would be the number.
Thank you.
Ms. Hardy.
Just for the benefit of the public, then, can you explain that $3 million and how it brings us to parity, and how we aren't losing that funds?
Yeah, so, so the original 3.5 that was requested by the district in the proposed budget, the, each year in the state funding model, we look at, the, the state looks at the minimum required calculation, the minimum required contribution. A big component of that contribution, the amount, is, is, is assessed valuations here in the borough. So those, as those assessed valuations increase, it increases the minimum required, and that minimum required is subtracted from state revenue. So, the $3.5 million holds us harmless from the lot. We, we lost $3.5 million in state revenue, we're increasing the local ask of that same $3.5 million. I guess we would just point out that, and recognize and acknowledge, that is a shift from the state, the burden being on the state, to a direct burden of local taxpayers here in the borough. So, but yes, the $3.5 million lines up exactly with the state revenue lost.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Mr. Dorn.
Um, just a clarification, um, and for those listening in, that the lobbyist, uh, line item that you referenced was, is not just a re, a lowering of that, it would be eliminate that contract.
That's how we have it in both scenarios, as it stands currently.
All right, and then, um, just also for clarification, that the department reductions referenced here, $285,000, are the ones that I submitted, and I just wanted to note the, the areas of the budget that I was, that I use for calculating. That 1% reduction is the superintendent, the admin services, human resources, teaching and learning, non-departmental, and information and technology, uh, which were approximately $28,500,000, and the 1% would be the 285, so, just for clarification.
Any additional questions?
Ms. Maradi.
Okay, Ms. Maradi, go ahead.
I have two questions. Uh, the first one is, Mr. DeGraw, to the chair, Mr. DeGraw, could you go back to Scenario A, please? And my second question, uh, if it's all right, um, can you, I think this is President Sanderson, can you explain the timeline we have now? Um, I emailed you yesterday, but I haven't heard back, um, about potentially rescheduling the vote on this to Monday, so that the community has time to review the options and provide feedback.
Uh, if you give me a moment, so I can take a look at your email.
Thank you, President Sanderson.
There we go. There's Scenario A, Ms. Maradi.
Thank you. I didn't have any questions, actually, I just needed to see it again.
Okay.
I guess for the listening public, I think the biggest difference between Scenario A and Scenario B is the PTR for secondary, um, and the E L P, uh, teachers, uh, Scenario B includes them and increases the local contribution ask for an honest ask and transparent proposal to the borough, uh, whereas Scenario A does not include PTR for secondary nor extended learning program teachers, and provides only a $3 million. It just won't ask to, to bro.
And then if, if I may, President Sanderson.
So our budget work is, is complete. Um, if we are voting on this approved agenda, is that correct? I mean, budget, uh, recommended budget.
Yes, so the remaining work that, that there is in front of the board at this point is working these two scenarios. Um, I would envision us coming back together at the special meeting tomorrow, and if, if it's the pleasure of the board to entertain amendments and its changes to either of these scenarios, a side note, what would be very helpful to us is if board members are, know at this time of amendments they are going to bring forward, if those could be emailed to Ms. Richardson in advance, that would help us organizationally, help to, to keep things straight. Um, a, and so, the work left, we are, we are near the end of the process, where we're looking at these two scenarios, looking at possible amendments, voting those amendments up or down, coming to a consensus as a group, and, and approving a final recommended budget. That, so, so that, we have currently special meetings scheduled for tomorrow as well as Thursday. If, depending on, when we come to this point each year, we have a couple of new board members who are new to this process, if, if we're in a specific special meeting and there's a relatively small number of change, I have documents that I have to prepare for final approval with motions, with specific numbers, with specific data. If there's a relatively small number of moving parts, I'll be able, for tomorrow, for example, I'll be able to ask for a half an hour, 45-minute recess, get those numbers straight. Side note, my budget specialist is, uh, on a pre-arranged vacation. Um, and, and as well as Ms. Herbert, our accounting director, so I am truly flying solo right now. If there's a relatively small number of, of changes that need to be made, I can, I can do that in a half-hour, 45-minute timeframe. We can come back and we can vote on a final recommended budget. If there are significant changes, for example, tomorrow, it's very possible we would need to come back maybe for five or 10 minutes the next evening, just to, to make a final vote and approve that recommended budget. Just depends on how many moving parts and changes there are.
So you're not, Mr. DeGraw, you're not asking for additional time, or are you asking for additional days?
I currently, currently not asking for additional days in order to pass, to approve the final recommended.
Okay. Yeah, I see your, I see your email, Ms. Maradi, and, um, I haven't seen, we have received, excuse me. We have received emails, and we have had some testimony. And the board has been working on this and, uh, asking for additional information that the administration and, uh, directors have supplied to us. So, I'm not, I'm saying, we're going to work today, the night we finish up. Tomorrow, we come back and we have additional time to work on our budget. I mean, we can go, we still have two more days, the 23rd and 24th. That'll take us this whole week of getting things accomplished, and then we can, uh, make our, uh, vote to make our recommended, uh, budget to be prepared to go to the borough. Ms. Hardy? Mr. Dorn?
Okay, um, I've got two comments. One is that, um, I would, I would... Am I back on again?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, one is that I'm, I'm not favoring of delaying, um, and partially because I, I think as we've gone on, the conversations, and particularly yesterday, I was really pleased, we hammered out some details, we have some overlaps, we have some things there. Um, I know the preparation of the budget for, uh, to get it over, printed and ready for the borough is just a week and a half away, so giving time for that. And we've gotten a lot of written comments. I've particularly been impressed with, as different items came up in our discussions, um, and we asked to hear from the community, um, it was impressive to me how people were listening to those work sessions, and we heard from them. I was impressed today, the, getting several calls on, um, and testimony tonight on North Star College. It was just put out yesterday, last night. I was the one who put it out there. I, and, and certainly in no way to undermine North Star College. And I, I removed it later in our conversations from one of my priorities. So, I think we're hearing from people, they are responding, they were quickly. Uh, we also need to act, uh, and this is not the end of the budget process. We still have to hear from the borough, we have to hear from the state, and, uh, then we'll have to do an approved budget. So, um, I think we, we are at a good point going forward, actually. I was, um, relieved last night with that, and I, my second comment is in terms of, when I look at this, Scenario A is the one certainly I favor. I think, yes, it keeps North Star College whole, if you want. It keeps C E C whole and Smart, essentially, whole, and those are two of my real, the priority areas. And I honestly think $3 million is, uh, is a appropriate level. It does stretch the borough. It does stretch our community. I kind of like on Scenario A, it wasn't on my original piece, but, uh, kindergarten aides between that and the elementary PTR, um, the borough has already expressed the support for this current year for kindergarten aides. Uh, elementary PTR, again, is a opportunity for our community to weigh in and say, what is important for them in our schools? And, uh, I think it offers a good balance. So I'll stop there at this point.
Excuse me, uh, Ms. Maradi had a follow-up question before you called on Mr. Dorn.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Maradi.
Thank you. Um, it was, uh, not a question, just a statement, that I think that it is unfair to our community to only give them 24 hours from seeing these two options, uh, in full view, um, to provide a feedback, and that by providing them four business days, and then providing, um, Mr. DeGraw four business days to complete after we can approve it, um, is a more fair ask of our community. And I, I hope that other board members, if they agree, might voice their opinion on that as well.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Maradi. We have Ms. Hardy.
Um, I support what Ms. Maradi has said. Uh, we have significantly changed the proposed budget, and what people have been able to give feedback on, the board took in, and we changed things. It is nowhere near the budget that was presented a few months ago. Um, and especially since the major difference between these two asks are whether or not our community supports asking for more funds from the borough. We should allow our community to tell us if they believe that that is important, and we are providing them almost no time at all to give us that feedback on whether or not this is something that the community wants. I know I've talked to people, I talked to a different borough assembly member today about this, and I will come back tomorrow and have a written-out thing on our duties as a school board member, but we are not giving people enough time to digest two very different scenarios than what was presented, um, a while ago. I am comfortable with these scenarios. I don't envision making a lot of big changes. Really, the only change is what we're asking for, which I would hope we would take the time to listen to the public about, like we listened to C E C, like we listened about kindergarten aides, like we've listened about E L P. We need to give them an opportunity to voice their opinion on this piece. The other thing, just on a personal note, is I had scheduled to go to a Stone Soup conference in Anchorage, and so I'm supposed to be on a plane at 7:00 tomorrow. I, if we're going to do this, can we move it up any earlier in the day, so that I'm not trying to rush out of door in order to make it?
Thank you for your comments. Are there any additional comments? Ms. Burnett.
I'm just going to say that plenty of time has been given. Um, we've had months with this budget, the public has had months with this budget. I don't know about the fellow board members and their emails, but mine blow up on a daily basis with opinions, comments, you know, this, save this, save that, um, which I 100% appreciate and feel that we have had more than enough input to go forward and get this appreciate and feel that we have had more than enough input to go forward and get this completed so that we can hand it off to the borough and get this thing going.
Ms. Matheson?
Thank you, I have to agree with Ms. Burnett. We were voted in to make these decisions, and my phone's blowing up all the time letting me know what the public thinks and feels about our budget, and I'm ready to move forward as well.
Thank you. And I'll just say, as we all know, this is our work, this is what we have been looking at, analyzing, and the administration and the directors have been giving us information that we've requested, so I feel that we can move forward with this, and Ms. Hardy will take a look at time-wise what we can do. Mr. DeGraw?
So just my final comments here tonight, I would, I would concur, the main, the main thought as I process things, I, little bit of a side note, I arrived at the board meeting late because I was in the queue trying to testify on HB sixty-five. Unfortunately, I didn't get that opportunity, however, there's an opportunity on the general fund budget tomorrow in House Finance, so I'll try to take advantage of that opportunity as well. But the main point being, we're still early in the budget process, Mr. Dorn mentioned that, we're still early, a lot of things can happen and will happen, and, you know, remembering that it's, it's an unfortunate situation, the timing, and we've talked about this, and hopefully, kind of a side note, million different thoughts going on all at once, so how to, how to correlate those and organize them in a way that's understandable. I mean, this is real high level, I'm just gonna throw this out, get on my soapbox. At a real high level, we can build a better system, we can build a better, we need to, we've talked about that a lot here in the Legislative Committee, at work sessions for, with the budget, we've talked about it in advocacy with lawmakers, I think there's an app, they're starting to become an appetite in June to look at the ship, so to speak, and I, we, there's a, there's a consensus growing that we can build a better ship. And my message is, okay, let's build a better ship, but in the meantime, we can't let the one we're sitting in now sink to the bottom of the lake or the ocean or whatever, we have to plug the holes, we've gotta buy ourselves some time, we can't just, we're to a critical mass point where we can't let things collapse on themselves. So we can build a, part, part of building that better system is coming up with a better calendar and a timing to where we can, we can meet the needs of our students through excellent staffing, you know, the, the, the calendar's unfortunate, but it is what it is, so a lot can happen, and every time I think of those unfortunate circumstances of the calendar, I just remind myself, the long game is building a better system, and so, you know, maybe our advocacy efforts can, can continue to focus on that and get more hyper-focused on specifics that would create a better system. So, long ways to go for this budget, I'm hopeful, I'm optimistic, our advocacy now will shift to a local level, I don't know, shift, the focus will, will turn to the borough and, and we'll have several opportunities to advocate at that level, I'm super appreciative of the relationship that we've forged in my, this is my fifth business cycle, and super grateful for the relationship that we have with, with our borough, and I think education is a priority here in our community, I know it is, and so very hopeful and optimistic on what we can see coming, coming out of the recommended budget and moving towards that approved budget. And the big difference in this budget cycle, you know, the new board members don't really know any different, but I think a tremendous amount of movement is going to occur in May and June as it has not necessarily in the past. There's been many years where there's been little to no movement in the months of May to June. The last few years, there's been some movement, but there's gonna be a whole whirlwind and flurry of movement, but hopefully for the better, we'll be, we'll be adding back things and restoring things that we have lost in the proposed, and even this recommended budget, however it shakes out here in the next couple of days, hopefully we'll be able to restore even more back to come to an approved budget that, that meets the needs the best we can for our students and our community. So optimistic, I think, is my general thought, so.
Thank you, Mr. DeGraw, I would just like to say to our board, who have been advocating on all sorts of levels. When you think about each one of us in our own perspectives, advocating, engaging, emailing, radio talk hosting, our trip to Juneau in, you know, when Mrs. Smith and myself, and I'm not gonna talk too much about it because I think she's gonna cover it all, but the piece about when we have to get our budget to them, the October count, the legislators we were speaking to for, this is for our listening audience, they really started to understand their ask of us, and I do believe that maybe changing statutes or timing is going to allow us to get to a place where we're not caught in this net of how we have to do this business, I think that has been made absolutely clear to them. I don't think this board, because they have advocated in so many different fashions, I think the administration and the directors for their work, especially on our, our video and our legislative priorities, because those were tools that we have been able to utilize. And as board president, this is the first time I've answered emails with four attachments, like how to testify before the legislators, how to send an email, how to send a text message, and it, it'll, it makes our community, which they already are, our stakeholders and our partners in education, but now it gives them extra tools to advocate and partner with us in that dynamic. And one thing that the legislators are being made aware of is not just what districts are asking, our boards are asking, but what our students are asking. And so this is our work, and I appreciate this board and where we've come so far, so thank you. Was there a question for Mr. Dorn, you had a comment?
Yes, thank you. Couple of things that strike me, is one, we've had these dates on our calendar for several months, you were out there, we knew we were gonna be doing them. The other thing is that when I look at the list that are up there, there's relatively little change, and that we have gotten a lot of feedback on a lot of those pieces in the different areas, kinda how some of those prioritized came out reflect that, and the greatest impact on, on students and staff. If you dismantle before we get, if we dismantle too early, those people are gone. And, and it's a fine line to balance those, not losing people and keeping programs. At this point, if the borough does not come through, and I would say we have a lot of latitude there, if we settle it, you know, and that'll be a board decision, we'll make it, if we happen to settle at three million, we've got millions there beyond which they could consider to give us more. I think it's trying to balance local and state as well as, again, I wanna say that drawing on our own funds as little as they are, you know, making cuts in different areas. And the other piece that I've really appreciated from the administration in this is putting out there a, the priority add-back list, which really this is predominantly reflective of, predominantly, there are a couple little things, very important things, I would say. But, but I think really as we look at those add-back lists, we should keep those in mind because those are also our advocacy pieces, they impact students, they impact how we operate. Even, you know, when we look at an accountant, on one hand, you say, well, what does that have to do with students? Well, there are supports that have to be done in order to get paychecks to people so that they can serve students and get the materials, and I mean, all the different things an accountant does. So I wanna, I'm trying to be very mindful of those pieces we wanna add back and we really use to advocate, and keeping in mind, we had testimony tonight in terms of some services to kids that we lost in, in the music area, the band orchestra level at elementary, that's a service that's gone, some of the tutorial, the reading initiatives that we have really as a community, and I really go back to the borough, who, I'd been, twenty years ago, got to the midnight hour literally and gave a million dollars over and above the district request for a reading, elementary reading initiative. And that predated RTI, predated a lot of the things, the MTSS and the Reading Act from the state. So I think we have reason to have confidence in our community, yes, I'm cognizant of what that means for any individual, yeah, in different circumstances, somewhere in better circumstances to support that and not, and others less able, because they're more stressed, but I think overall, we've, it hits a good balance. And, and I would really keep in mind that we continue to advocate not only what's off the list as an, and is there as an add-back priority for later if the state comes through with money. And that we also are cognizant of the things that we have lost, we have given up and reduced for students over the years, and I'm talking minimum of ten years, we can really go back to the mid nineties when cuts really, really started hitting the schools, so.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Anderson, in my mind, we're just voting on which one of these options the board would like to approve, that seems to be a very short meeting tomorrow to vote yes or no for one of these options, and then if needed, vote yes or no for the other one. And I feel that everyone's, everyone in this community has had months to give us input. And I'd also like to put forward that I support adding everything back, you know, like, I want all the PTR, on PTR even lower than it is, I want all the music put back, I want like to build a giant science lab and do all kinds of special things, and all of that stuff. And I promise that we're this board to ask the borough for a special meeting for us to do a work session with them regarding our budget, that I would personally present every single thing that we wish we had funded in a appropriate and dynamic way, and ask for anything that this entire board feels that the borough might be inclined to hear from us. But on, on paper, in our presentation, I would like to be reasonable, I support the three million dollar ask scenario, which I support zero additional ask yesterday, so I feel that the three million dollar ask additional is a pretty serious compromise, and, and I promise that if this, this board would ask for that work session, I would work very hard to encourage the Borough Assembly to fund us fifteen million dollars if they want to. But I think that the good neighbor on paper ask is reasonable and, and the three million dollars is what I'm supporting at this time, and I'd be glad to go and ask for the world face-to-face in a work session, but I think this is a reasonable presentation in, in writing.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith, for your comments. I think, oh, Ms. Malin?
Yeah, I just wanted to kinda reiterate something that Mr. DeGraw said, we'll bring the scenario A and B, if any board members have amendments to either scenario A or scenario B, if they could get those to the board or to, to us ahead of time so we can be a little prepared for any changes, otherwise it would be as Mrs. Smith said, scenario B, A as it stands or B as it stands, but if the board has ideas that they wanna change one of those scenarios, just letting us know a little bit of, before the meeting so we can get things prepared.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. DeGraw?
Yeah, just in direct response to follow up on that and in response to Ms. Smith, I was very pleased with the progress that was made last evening, and so, yes, that, you know, now, obviously if there's amendments the board members would like to make, that opportunity is going to be there, but yes, it certainly can be a quick meeting. And then to follow up on Mr. Dorn's and Ms. Smith's, as far as investments, you know, preparing, preparing testimony, going through different scenarios and talking about increasing PTR, and just wanting to get to, back to our current PTR of twenty-five, twenty-seven, and thirty, you, you often forget, it was not that long ago that our kindergarten class size was what, twenty-two, you know, and so, you know, it's, it's unfortunate that we get used to, we step up and then we get used to that, and then that becomes the norm, of course we have to step beyond that, and really ideally, what's, 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 what's fair for our community is a kindergarten class size of twenty-one or twenty-two kids, you know, and how do we get back to that level and have the funds necessary to invest? And, and, you know, we wanna talk, you know, we wanna talk outcomes, that requires an investment, and that requires investment in acceptable class sizes, good teachers in acceptably sized classes, class sizes that are acceptable where, where learning can go on, and so, I, a hundred percent, we concur with that investment side of things of how do we, how do we go beyond just treading water, how do we start to thrive and succeed and do better and see those outcomes? We know great things are happening, you know, the video and, and providing those types of resources that Ms. Smith described and Mr. Dorn, investing beyond just the status quo, that will amplify those, those unique individual outcomes that we know are happening already. Kids will start to read more, I mean, it's just this snowball effect, you know, you're, you're used to thinking of a snowball effect downhill, but it's a snowball effect uphill and progressing forward, so that's what we really are hopeful for, you know, as things unfold at the state level and just the opportunity, I think, I'm hopeful will be there, that we can actually look at things like that, that will benefit our students, our community, and benefit staff. I mean, how, how great of a thing would it be for staff to have primary elementary classes back to twenty-one or twenty-two, it'd just be, it'd be, it'd be life-changing, I think, so we're hoping for, for, for good outcomes here as the budget progresses.
Thank you, Mr. DeGraw. At this point, we'll go to our comments and committee reports, Ms. Malin, do you have anything?
I would just like to briefly say, I grew up with a saying, the proof is in the pudding, and my grandmother used to say that all the time, and, and that meant that the proof will come out at the end. And so as I was sitting here this evening and watching the proof in our pudding, being our mission and excellent education, excellent equitable education, we witnessed some, some proof in our pudding tonight. The level of outstanding academic students that come from this district, the, the level of musicians that come from our district and our system, I think that we have young spellers, we have young language speakers, and they're all doing excellent, and they're all excelling in a way that, that is our proof in the pudding, that what we're doing is, is an excellent and equitable education. And, and Mr. Dorn has often said that the test scores are not the final proof of a student's success, but I do think what we saw tonight is proof of, of success. So, so I just wanted to make those comments, that we are seeing fruit of an excellent and equitable education system.
Thank you, Ms. Malin. Colonel Suri, do you have any closing comments?
None for me, thanks.
Thank you, sir, for being with us tonight. Ms. Smith?
I have several comments, first of all, Ms. Anderson and I went to Juneau for legislative committees. First of all, Ms. Anderson and I went to Juneau for Legislative Committee, and we had an excellent visit with many, many legislators, including both chairs of the Education Committee. And we were able to, I think, really articulate what Fairbanks has done to deal with our budget shortfalls and to make sure that our students are receiving the best education that is available to them and to let them know how our stagnant funding has affected our ability to continue to do that. We were able, like as Ms. Anderson said, to show our video, which was kind of actually frustrating because we sent our video to all of those legislators and we put it all over and everyone we asked said, I don't know what video you're talking about. So keep on sending it to them. And the little girl at the end saying, please fund my education, every single person's heart melted. So whoever's daughter that is, she's very adorable. And, you know, we talked about the timeline for our funding. We talked about other things besides the BSA that I thought were really important. And fortunately, it seemed that pretty much everyone that we talked to was supportive of additional funding for education. And they, and, and we talked to an eclectic group of people and, and some of them were not as supportive as others. But I, I didn't really encounter but maybe one person who was really staunchly saying this was not, you know, something that was on the table at all. You know, of course, there's debate regarding the amount and where that money is going to come from, and that's an important conversation, but that's not our conversation, it's theirs. So I think that our time there was really well spent, and I'm very happy that we made the decision to go at the time that we went. And I appreciate being able to go. I'm really looking forward to judging at the Science Fair on Thursday. And I just adore Science Fair. It's pretty much one of my favorite things. I have made an innumerable number of Science Fair boards in my life. And I also wanted to say that the first testifier had a Frederick Douglass quote, quote that I often think of. And when I think of that quote, I think of it, I, I would never think of that as a duty of education or the education system, that it's building strong children is the duty of the parents of those children and their guardians. And the school is here to support the parents and guardians in the building of those children. And so I hope that we are a good partner to our parents and that our policies and our behaviors reflect being good partners to our parents because it is easier to build strong children than to repair broken men. And another favorite Frederick Douglass quote that I have is that I prefer to be true to myself even to the hazard of incurring ridicule of others than to be false and incur my own abhorrence. And to that end, I would say I am glad for the work that we have done and I will work hard for further funding for education.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Colonel Alvarez, Alvarado?
I don't have anything. Thank you very much, and I hope you guys all get home safely.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Matheson?
Thank you. I wanted to echo Mrs. Smith's support to parents. I definitely support parents and, and that the schools are supporting our parents. I, I'm super grateful that I have schools that support me as a parent, and I'm hoping that all parents are feeling this way. I just wanted to remind everyone of the concert on Monday, March 27th at 7 o'clock, the Haring Auditorium. It's Music in Our Schools Month. And I was able to go to the orchestra, and I'm floored by the talent that we have in our schools. So I encourage everyone who can make it on Monday, please make it. It's going to be amazing. Thank you to Mr. Cluton for bringing the jazz band here. And I just counted, we have 70 musicians, talented musicians, that won, participated in some way at the ASA Music Festival. Like 70. Holy cow. I'm just floored. The language students that participated in the Declamation State Championship, holy cow. I am, my first language is Spanish, and I didn't learn how to speak English until I was five in kindergarten. And even in junior high, I would still mismatch the way that you speak English versus Spanish. And so for these high schoolers who are just, you know, they're in Spanish one and Spanish two, I'm just, holy cow. I want to high five every single one of them. So thank you guys for sharing that big win with us. And Acadaca, holy cow. How many did we have today? I, I participated in Acadaca when I was in high school as well. So I, I was just, I didn't get to see the big picture of how many students participate in with our smaller district. I grew up in Los Angeles, so huge. In our smaller district, having so many winners, I, I, I can't applaud our students enough for all of the hard work. I cannot applaud the parents enough for driving them to and from and, and making sure that they show up. So thank you to the parents. Thank you to the students who are working so hard. And thank you to every single coach, teacher, and staff member that pours into our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy.
Sorry, it will be longer. To start off with, these two additional meetings that are coming up have not been on our calendar for months. They've been on our calendar for weeks. I routinely go through my phone and add meetings as they show up. I purchased my ticket for this conference months ago when these meetings did not exist. I have blocked out time to attend these meetings. I pay nightly for childcare so I can be here in person. These meetings are a priority in my life. Since I will, sorry. Since we will not be moving the meeting to Monday, I ask that we hold the meeting this Thursday so I could be fully present via Zoom and not trying to run out to catch a plane. Also, to the listening public, please take time tonight to write this board, call board members, and come to the special meeting in which we will be voting on this budget. The difference between these two plans is preserving our ELP programs and our current secondary middle, high school pupil to teacher ratio. This means moving middle school classes from 27 students to 30 and moving our high school classes from 30 to 32. It's also very important to keep in mind that PTR is not a hard cap. It's an average across the district. This means that there will be some classes with far fewer students than that PTR. And due to school size and small locations, but there will also be many classes above the PTR for similar reasons. As another board member said, you can't get what you don't ask for. Asking for what our district needs is not, and not, is asking for what our district needs, not wants, but needs to maintain PTR is not greedy or an overreach. While we cannot count on our legislature in Juneau to take care of our local schools' needs, we can and should be able to count on our local elected officials to put the best interest of Fairbanks students first. Our community has told us time and time again through committees, through surveys, through testimonies, that they value a low PTR and that the school board should listen to them or listen to those voices and ask for what our schools need. Please make your voices heard.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. Mr. Dorn?
Thank you. Couple of things. Again, want to thank the students, and as Ms. Malin mentioned, the, what we saw tonight are indicators of student success and how well our students do. But we see it every day in classrooms on many, many different levels and fronts. And we can be really, really proud of our students. So I wanted to second that. I was going over, looking at our district website and just update on negotiations and pieces. And just as one member, I was kind of caught when I looked at the dates of modifications to the website on the negotiations progress for ESA negotiations, the last modifications, the last things that were reached any agreement on was January 23rd, two months ago. And then when I looked at the FEA one, it's noted it's November 14th, which is quite an extensive. And I know there's been conversations, et cetera, but I just want to perhaps call, encourage the district, which is us, and both the associations to, if you want, take another stab at it. Come together, talk. And when I go over the list, there are things that are money, and we are dependent on the legislature. Several of us, I know, sent in testimony today to the House Education Committee on the BSA. I really appreciate it, Mr. DeGraw, hanging online. I was tempted to do that, and then I thought, well, I don't think I'm going to make the meeting if I do. But I hope it was indicative of a lot of people testifying. So that voice from across the state is really, really important. We're all in this together. But we will need support for our staff. Otherwise, we all know that it's competitive. The legislature and the governor's office just took recognition of that in, you know, I would say, long overdue raises when you look at their, their dollar amounts. They're pretty, pretty low. I was surprised at some of them when I looked at it. That's the same thing we have for our teachers, our education support staff, our principals. We've got to be competitive and we're going to need that, that support from the state. With that being said, I know those, there are items we can't really get very far, but there are items we can sit down and talk about, and we can make progress. And I would hope that all three parties will undertake that instead of just waiting for arbitration, which is still weeks, if not months away, particularly as it gets us closer to summer. And we have negotiations for the principals coming up next year. So it behooves all of us to sit down and talk. That's my piece on negotiations. On the broader piece, talking about legislate, the legislature and advocating, I would just encourage all of us to stay alert to that. It's been interesting, just in the last two weeks, there have been misinformation that has been given, how the intensive needs calculation is done, was presented to committees and through the state board that raised questions that was not accurate and had to be corrected and thankfully, and even came out during some of the press conferences. But thankfully, there were some legislators who have taken time to really look at it and are starting, are trying to make some of those corrections. There was information given on funding and student success, public education success that was given as part of a state board DEED presentation that was not their work, but was, and was questioned appropriately by legislators. And later on, there was, it was very interesting to go through that presentation when it was given again by a private organization in the evening to a joint committee of the House that even when asked, I was surprised, questions that could not be answered were not answered or were found to be erroneous, again, including the intensive needs calculations. So I think we need to be alert to a lot of those things. I would also hope that as we watch, we also keep an eye on the state board. State board passed a resolution that was never noticed. It was at the last minute, literally, the very, very end of their multi-day meeting with no notice. And there are things that are impact of, I'm not saying taking a position necessarily one way or the other at this point, but I think it says to us, we need to really be watching what goes on. And it's not just the money bills, but there are a lot of bills that add to our plates, whether it's civics, whether it's economics, requiring certain things be taught in schools, adding to our plates. Alaska REITs adds to our plates. There is little, little funding for a lot of these initiatives. So we also need to be aware of the other things that impact our individual students or individual families as we do advocate for the fact that we need an investment, a significant investment in public education because we do serve every student and every student who comes to our door, every family who comes to our door. Now, we do that, and I'm concerned that there are distractors that get out there. In the last piece, I'll, I'll mention, when we talk about funding pieces, a potential distractor that I'm hearing from some legislators on is that the governor has proposed bonuses for teachers. That's one-time funding that goes away quickly. It does not help to really recruit and retain for the long term. So it can't be a trade-off for increase in the BSA and giving us consistent, solid funding that can meet both our short-term and long-term planning. So with that, I will close my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Ms. Maradi?
No comment.
Thank you. Ms. Burnett?
Thank you, President Sanderson. First, just a reminder, teaching and learning has a material review going on right now for this week for their ELA materials and curriculum things that we are going through. So if you would like to get in on that, you'd like to give some public comment, please come downtown, right here to this building and come check out our books and come give us a review on that. That's super important as well. So also, I would just like to backtrack a little bit and just put some worth behind Ms. Smith's comments, Mrs. Smith's comments earlier with the Borough Assembly. I would 100% support a $15 million ask with them in a work session just to sit them down in front of us and lay it all out and be like, look, this is what we want, this, this is what our kids deserve, this is what we would love to have. But I will agree on paper, the three additional, it, it's a lot, but it, it's what we need to do on paper. And again, I, I want to ask for everything. I want everything. I want our kids to have everything. Music is so important. All of our classes, all of our programs, everything is important to our children. And so in a perfect world, you know, we would have all of that. So I do support sitting with the Borough Assembly and speaking with them and doing anything we can to have them understand that our funding situation is dire and we need their help, especially locally. And then for the state, I was also a part of sending an email today to our legislatures and the House Education Committee in support of the BSA increase. And I encourage everybody out there to please do so. Please call your legislatures, please email them, please talk to our borough, please talk to every assembly member we have. The words can't just come from us, it has to come from everybody. And so we, we need everyone involved so that everyone understands the situation we're in and that our kids need their programs. I don't, I don't want to cut any of this, trust me. This is- Trust me, this has probably been the most single hardest, especially with a first round in budget. This has been the single most hardest thing I've ever done. I've lost sleep. I make phone calls constantly, send emails all the time. It's a lot, and we need help. And the people that can help us are those locally. It's us, it's you guys, it's our Borough, it's our legislature. So anything we can do for that. Also, this thank you to our jazz band that was here. That was amazing. Congratulations to everyone who placed in state and all your accomplishments. It's absolutely amazing to watch our children succeed. And a big, special congratulations to a couple hockey players that I've been watching since they were about eight, nine years old, Noah Matheson and Sean Middleton for West Valley High School. They are freshmen who lettered in hockey. Oh, and Zach Seekins, too, freshman who lettered in hockey this year. And it's just absolutely amazing to watch these boys and their accomplishments. So good job, boys. Keep at it. Good job to all of our kids out there. Just keep doing what you're doing. And thank you to those who came and testified today. And thank you to our admin.
Ms. Smith?
I'd like to start out by saying thank you to everyone on the board and all of our administrative people. I know that the budget is a really, really, really stressful time, and I appreciate all of you guys' work on it. And then I also wanted to thank all of the students who came out today to accept their awards. And it's always really, really nice to see all the students and so many students in the boardroom. And with that, I'd also like to say I'm really looking forward to the Music in Our Schools Month concert on March 27th at 7:00 PM. I think you should all go. I'm going to go. I'm going to bring as many people as I can. I think it's going to be a really, really good concert. And then I also wanted to say today is World Down Syndrome Day. And to promote it is to promote inclusivity, raise public awareness, encourage advocacy, and support the well-being of those living with Down Syndrome. And something that I really appreciate about our district is how inclusive and supportive we are of our special education students. And I just wanted to say that my school's Partners Club today, they did "You Wear Crazy Socks," and then we all did this. They do lunch on Tuesdays for Partners Club, and they got all those kids together, and they took a picture with all the kids with crazy socks. I'm wearing fluorescent pink cat socks today. It's really fun, and I really appreciate that about our district. I also wanted to say something that I've noticed from the students when discussing the budget with them is that they're concerned with the cutting library aids. And I really appreciate them coming back into the recommended budget. And I really hope that that gets supported. And then I also wanted to ask, I don't know, through the chair or something, can I get a copy of the A and B recommendations of the budget? Because I was not present at the meeting yesterday, and I don't think that I got an email about it, and I would just like to request that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
That can happen. Thank you, Ms. Smith. So my closing comments, again, is to this board. I want to, again, talk about our commitment, the work that you do, the hours that we put in together. I remember doing the superintendent search at the Alaska Pipeline Training Center when I was introducing the board members, which I forgot, Colonel Alvarez, but didn't mean to do that. I remember saying that, you know, here are the people that I serve with, and we have our strengths and we have our weaknesses. And we're better together when we're focused on our students. We don't always have to agree. We don't have to agree at all, but we have to do our work. And what I appreciate is I'm learning from each and every one. When I took the position, I said I was a reluctant leader because I wasn't seeking the president at all. I was just hang out, do my board work, and do the things that I love doing. This is part of it. So this has stretched me, and I'm just committed to finishing it out, that trying new things and incorporating. You've seen that with the agenda. There are some other things that I'm thinking about doing. But I do those things and research and ponder those things because of the board members that I serve with. Each of them I could depend on and ask and inquire of things because they have a certain strength that I don't. But as we are doing our work, I am encouraged with the commitment that we have with our parents, with our community, and with the stakeholders in education. This has been, we say this word, heavy lift. But this year is the first year that I, well, I will say that I think in answering emails, that documents have been attached to our community people and teachers and whoever's written me. And those documents have been asking them to add their voice to the work that this board does. A lot of things we cannot do on our own. We must have a collaborative effort. And with that in mind, I was thinking that next year, because this whole budget thing stresses me out crazily, to have some early sessions before we even think about doing anything else with our stakeholders and community, where we can have conversations, they can have input. And I have been researching ideas of how that can look so that it's less disarming, and people can just come and have statements, say what they're interested in, say what they're passionate about that have to do with our students' education. I look forward to our presentation before we take it to the Borough because this year, again, I've asked Ms. Malane to be able to attach maybe those three. It'd be great if those three principles could just come hang with us when we do that board, that budget presentation so that the Board, the Borough would hear from us. I think all the ideas that have been thrown out from our board members is because we want to deal with students. Our emphasis is about students. It looks messy. It does not, it's not comfortable, but it is the work that we've been assigned to do. And I believe that we are forging ahead, and we will close out strong at the end of this year to finish working on some other things that the Board needs to take care of. So with that in mind, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn? Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you for your work.